Good evening. The June 26, 2018 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County's school system or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and they are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you would wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing on a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board's secretary no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Kellykin, District 5.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney.
Dr. Mayer, please introduce who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, guests, tonight is a monumental evening in Marion County's School Board history. Tonight is the, well, today was the last day of work for somebody who has been with us forever, for thirty-five years. When we say that to somebody, you touch the life of a child, of a child. You have lived a great life. This woman has impacted the lives of thousands of children and thousands of employees. There's nobody across the state, when you talk about education, who doesn't know the person we're going to recognize tonight. When I go to my superintendent meetings, the superintendents from all over the state always ask about Paula Bundrick. So, tonight, we would like Paula to come on up. Paula, this is for you. It's from all of us.
Oh, my gosh.
And I'll hand it to Frank. But I know we caught you off guard.
Yes.
But would you like to say a word or two this evening?
I'll try.
Okay, okay.
Thank you all so much. I've already been through this once on Thursday, and I think I cried all the tears that I had Thursday. But guess what? Here they are again. It's not hard to do a job when you enjoy what you're doing. And in the superintendent's office, every day's a new day. We never really know what's coming our way. So, it's kind of fun, and I'm not going to say it's always great, but I've enjoyed it. There's a sign that I always had in my office that was my motto, I guess, if you want to say, that I always tried to live on. Is it "Because Nice Matters"? And I think that no matter what we do, we need to be nice. And I think that's what really matters, and that's what makes us who we are. So, thank you.
Paula, we're not through with you. Mr. James?
Paula, I didn't get there in time enough to make my remarks before your crowd, but I did come, and I know you know that. Paula, I'm going to say this to you. Thirty-five years is a long time. And I'm going to tell you now, I might be the oldest one here now, because I got forty-seven and you got thirty-five. And when I say that to you, I'm looking over my shoulder and saying, is anybody that got more than we do? But first of all, let me say this to your husband. I've been knowing your wife a long time. And you know, this is the first time I've seen you. And when I say this, let me just say this to you. Paula has gone through every up and down in the school system. And when I say this to all the employees that called and asked for something, and they find out that Paula can answer the question for you, because she's been through everything, you know, on behalf of all of us. And when I say all of you, all of us, I know the students out there may not know you, but they know of your deeds. I think out of you and Brenda, every time I had a problem that I really disagreed with, I always asked you guys to play your heart, little David, to settle me down. And you all managed to do that. When we had issues for the non-instructional staff, this lady right here stood up for you. She would always make the phone call and say, "Mr. James, have you thought about this? Have the Board thought about this?" And on behalf of the employees that didn't say anything, they know how much you will be missed. And as a Board member, especially for this Board here, because I think I've, I've got a little seniority on them, we want to thank you for all that you've done. And I want to thank your husband for putting up with it for all these years. Thank you, Paula.
And I'd like to say something from a different perspective. I've gone through five superintendents with you as a parent. And starting back in nineteen ninety, when I became very involved as a parent activist, there was one thing that I could always count on, no matter whether I was on the side of the superintendent. The parents actually always won their cases. But if I was on the side of the superintendent or not, you treated me totally, completely like I was so special, even though when I walked out the door, you might have kicked the door. I don't know. But, you know, because you've known me for twenty-eight years now. And you know, I just, I don't have the ability to put lipstick on a pig. I just don't even have it in my DNA. And yet, you know, you'd say, "Now, Nancy, you need to look at this and look at that." You, again, were a person that I could come to, and you would shut that door, and we'd have a little conversation about whatever's happening. And you were a wise, wise counsel for me. And so, you know, from the roots as a parent activist, all the way through as a Board member, I've told you many times that you are probably the kindest person I've ever known. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Yeah. Paula, I just want to say that you are true testimony of kindness matters and nice matters, because you have never been anything less than that. For the short three and a half, I can't compete with Mr. James or Ms. Stacy. I've known you for the three and a half, three and a half years. And when I walked through the door as a new Board member, you shared the wisdom with me. You gave me guidance that I didn't know I needed, and you did give me those talks sometimes that I didn't know I needed. But you always did it in a very kind and respectful way, and I'm just very appreciative of you. And I did, the other day, have a moment of like, well, when something happens, who am I going to ask? And I'm sure we'll navigate our way. But enjoy your grandbabies and your family, and just thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Paula, you know, it's been over thirty-five that we've known you. You know, the first time we had a meeting and I went to Paula and I, and she was always there for everything I wanted to do. When I wanted to tutor, when I wanted to go out to tutor, to be a tutor, she was like, "Come on." And there's one word that I had always, wisdom, and you still it, you still it. And I want to just, I will call you back still. I know that, because you're a wonderful person.
Thank you.
And I, you are the ultimate professional. I have been with you on a professional level on many, 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 many different ways. When we were forming the Education Foundation, when I was the executive director, and you were always setting those appointments for me and whichever superintendent was there, your professionalism was at the top of anybody's game, and I thank you for that. And I thank you for your friendship over all these years, and enjoy those grandbabies. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula, leave a light on for us.
Before Paula does the pledge, y'all hang out, because Paula has a legacy that she's
going to leave with us, and she's going to share that later on in the Board meeting. So, okay? You good? Okay. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for With the exception of the job descriptions for school security officer and senior school security officer under Item C-14.1 and Item C-21.1, which have been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 26, 2018 School Board meeting with the materials in the Board packet, those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you okay, Ms. Nancy? The motion passed?
Yes.
Five zero. Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 3, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Thank you.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes for discussion? If none, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 8, 2018 School Board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 17, 2018 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please vote by saying aye. Motion passed, five zero. Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, CFO, Business Services, and Ms. Kristen Corrigan, Internal Auditor, please come forward and introduce the individuals to be recognized for excellence in bookkeeping.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Attorney Gibbs, and Mrs. Martinez-Lopez. Good evening. It is wonderful to pause and recognize excellence, not only in academics, but also in fiscal responsibility. And we thank you for the opportunity to highlight our ninth school that has a perfect audit in this fiscal year. And I'll relinquish the podium to Christine, who provides some additional information.
Good evening, Superintendent Mayer and Board Members. This department achieved what we call, I say department, this school achieved what we call a perfect audit. As we've talked in the past, a perfect audit consists of having no findings for the school year, which means that they've met all the red book requirements, Florida statutes, and our School Board policies we have in place. The certificate that they're receiving tonight says that it's an award of bookkeeping excellence presented in recognition of achieving an audit with no findings for the fifteen, sixteen, or sixteen, seventeen school year. It is signed by Dr. Heidi Mayer and our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis. I'd like to call up the principal at Evergreen Elementary during the fifteen, well, during this current year and during the sixteen, seventeen school year, Mr. Wayne Livingston, and their secretary, Ms. Valerie Landreth. We are pleased to tell you that Evergreen Elementary had a perfect audit for both the fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen school year. They also had a perfect audit for fourteen, fifteen as well. Since they have now achieved three perfect audits in a row, which is very, almost impossible to do, it's obvious that they are taking a conscientious approach to being fiscally sound and responsible at their school. This is a great accomplishment. Valerie does a great job with her staff and keeps them working closely with her in order to reach their bookkeeping accomplishments. Saying that, congratulations, and thank you for all you've done for Evergreen.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Beth McCall, Madam Superintendent, Dr. Mayer, School Board Members. It is indeed an honor to be able to stand before you tonight and to recognize Valerie Landreth for her accomplishments. You know, to achieve the goal of three perfect audits in a row, it's a dream come true for all secretaries to just do it once, but she has done it three times in a row. But you failed to mention that she's actually accomplished this mission four times, this goal four times of a perfect audit. So, congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
And she's done it across several administrators. I think I was the most fortunate to have her for two years in a row, but she's done this across several administrators. So, it speaks volumes about you, and we commend you for your success, and thank you very much.
Dr. Mayer, you have a turnaround school update for us?
Yes, Ms. Hamby, who is the Director of Turnaround and Early Learning. She's going to come up and give you a brief pulse point on what our schools are doing
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Mrs. Martinez Lopez, and Mr. Gibbs. It's a privilege for me to present to you this evening updates regarding the turnaround schools. As you know, statewide testing results have been released. However, instead of sharing those details with you this evening, that will be shared at a School Board Work Session. So, tonight's agenda, the objectives that I'll cover regarding the turnaround schools will be sharing some updates regarding summer professional development and planning, summer programs for students, the 2018-19 District Community Assessment Team meetings that are set, and also, at the end of the presentation, you'll have timed, will be provided for you to ask any questions. Before sharing the summer professional development and planning that is presently occurring at each of the schools, I want to share a goal that helps frame the conversations and the efforts that is happening with the school administrative teams and also the district support as professional development and planning is occurring. This goal is to increase student proficiency and also the learning gains as a result of providing targeted professional development and collaboration aimed at standards-based instruction and differentiation. Some highlights of the professional development and planning in relation to the top schools and also Greenway Elementary include the Differentiated Accountability Coaching Academy. Today and tomorrow, the principals, assistant principals, and their content area specialists, along with district support, Ms. Beck and myself, are participating in this DA Coaching Academy. Today, at the academy, it was very beneficial as we compared athletic coaches to instructional coaches. We all were reminded of several key points. I want to share a few of those key takeaways. One is, is that we all serve as coaches, and the importance of coaching, the coaching role that we have as administrators, as content area specialists, and also as teachers. We were reminded that in all of these roles, as a coach, it's important to remember to take halftime adjustments and make those adjustments when needed, like an athletic coach would, to make sure that adjustments are needed and based on evidence, not on emotion. Working with these principals and their administrative teams at the DA Academy today again reminded me about their dedicated efforts and care for the students. I just want to commend their staff for their efforts this year in regards to transforming the learning environments. Another item I want to show out, point out is on July 23, Educational Directions is going to provide professional development to Evergreen Elementary School. And it's going to be an all-day professional development followed with planning for their school administrative team. And Dr. DeCenci, the President of Educational Directions, has offered the administrative teams of the turnaround schools and also the bottom three hundred schools to also participate in this. So, that is on July 23. Additional highlights include the vast professional development opportunities planned and offered by the district. Dr. Shayna Horn and her team have offered and planned many different offerings throughout the summer. And one of the ones that I want to highlight is the new ELA curriculum. They have several different sessions scheduled throughout the summer to be able to accommodate the various schedules of employees. In order to continue building a positive learning environment and also to promote student leadership, Wyamina Park and Oak Crest have trainings planned to further their implementation of the Stephen Covey Leader in Me program to develop student leadership. Greenway is utilizing teacher leaders as they become trained in the Energy Bus Program. Educational Directions has twenty-one days planned onsite to offer focus and summer planning support to Evergreen Elementary School. Mr. Bob Pettit is the site manager assigned to oversee the process, and Debbie Crowdey has been the person working onsite with the administrative team. At the next School Board meeting, Dr. DeCenci, the President of Educational Directions, will share some updates with the School Board on their work with Evergreen Elementary this school year, or this summer. Supporting the students at schools has continued through the summer. As shared at a previous School Board meeting, summer funding is being provided through the UNICID grant for the top schools and also Greenway. Reddick Collier is providing this Setting Sale with iReady camp utilizing their Title One funds. All students were given the opportunity to participate in two sessions a week, one focusing on math and the other on English Language Arts. The kids enjoy the pirate theme and cashing in their stickers, as you can see from the pictures, to earn their pirate loot. In addition, they all have a chance to either eat breakfast or lunch when they come to those sessions. This was a team effort, working with the principals of each of the schools, along with Ms. Beck and myself, to try to provide extra support this summer for all students. In addition to sharing the elementary summer school programs, I want to share an example of summer programming being offered at the secondary level that supports Goal Two, which centers around increasing the percentage of students graduating on time and post, prepared for post-secondary education or other career paths. Lakewear Middle School has a, is finishing up their first year of implementing the School Improvement Grant Year One, and one of their models with Lakewear Middle School is a transition transformational model. To help prevent course failures, transition camps were scheduled and organized for the summer. So, right now, there's a camp happening at Lakewear Middle School where approximately sixty students, incoming students to Lakewear Middle School are attending to help boost them academically and also help them learn skills to help them with this transition. A hundred and forty students transitioning from Lakewear Middle School to Lakewear High School will be participating in a camp in July, and this will also help them as a transition from middle school to high school. Not only are the students being provided skills and opportunities to, and also opportunities to connect with the staff at each of those schools, but these students also will receive school supplies to assist them with this transition. Before ending the presentation this evening, I want to make sure that all of you, along with the community members here in attendance and the ones that are watching online later on, that everyone marks their calendars for the Community Assessment Team meetings for this upcoming school year. The meetings are scheduled triannually, the third Tuesday of the month, in September, January, and also in April. This Advisory Council is made up of the turnaround schools, the SIG4 grant schools, and the Home Instruction for Parents of Preschool Youngsters program. The principals attend and give updates regarding their action steps related to their school improvement plans, and they also solicit input and assistance from the community. So, I'm hopeful that your schedule will allow for you to attend these Community Assessment Team meetings. In addition, please know that the principals are always welcoming you all to come visit them at their campuses. This concludes my presentation here. Now, you have an opportunity to ask questions.
Mr. James?
This is closer to what I wanted. And I'm glad you gave it to me in terms of what we're doing this summer. But when we come back to the work sessions, what I'm hoping for is that we look at where we were, where we finished this year. Well, let's look at where we finished the third quarter, where we are, where we finished this year, and our goals for the, what we plan to do at the next reporting period. Now, I'm looking for that on the turnaround schools, and that's the biggie for me. The next thing I want to really drill down into, look at, I want you to look at the gifted program and the effect that it had on Evergreen, and if there's anything that we can do to return that. I realize that there is, that those kids have been moved already, and trying to reverse them back would create another headache, but just look at some of the things that we can do to make sure that we take advantage of any programs that can attract kids to Evergreen. So, I want, I really want to look at that. So, when I think in terms of what I'm looking for more than anything else, I'm looking for you to tell me where we are when we start this, start this final tour. You know, I don't expect every school to be a C or B. I just want to know where we are. Then I want to see the progress in what we're doing in these schools particularly, particularly. And then I want to, at some point, make sure that all of the teachers, that they have all the teachers that they need, and they have all the resources. And this is what I'm wanting to get out of the next report when we get ready to open for school, are they prepared for school? So, other than that, that's close to what I want. No cigar yet.
All right.
But it's close. Okay.
Ms. King?
I have a quick question. How many students did you say, or did you not say, I couldn't remember because I was looking down here, are in the iReady program for the summer school? Did you say?
It varies from each school. So, some of them, they have like forty, like at Evergreen, they have close to fifty students. And Wyamina Park, we just have one teacher working there because they're actually not, they don't have third grade reading camp because they're doing some renovations there. And so, it's a smaller group with the one teacher. So, each session, there is ten students, and there are sessions throughout the, throughout the day.
Okay. And then my next question is, is because I've heard of different things about iReady. Have we done any research or anything to see how our FSA scores correlated with the prediction of the iReady?
And I know Mr. McGowan's department is working on that, so I'm not going to...
Okay, so, we're not sure. Because I noticed that you have on here, like, they're doing iReady during these sessions, and I wanted to make sure that what we're doing is, you know, valid and reliable. And so, that's what I'm getting after, is like, if what we're doing is effective for our students.
Right, and good point. And that's what, one of the resources they're doing, and then also small group one-on-one instruction. So, it's not just them getting on the computer, but they're working with... So it's not just them getting on the computer, but they're working with them individually and in small groups with other resources.
Right, but they are using iReady.
They are using that as one of the tools.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to say thank you for, because I'm looking at the goals, I would like, I think you're very targeted for this, and thank you.
You're welcome.
If I have any information, I mean, questions, I will call you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the external operator, I'm aware that he's invited other, other three turnaround schools to sit in on some of the, some of the conferences or whatever they have in over there. How's that going?
Yeah, actually, the, it, the professional development that is July 23, that's where it's going to include many, we've moved that, that training to Brewster Hall, so that way it will accommodate as many administrative teams that will be a part of that. The sessions that have been happening at Evergreen, they've been talking with different, the different members of the administrative team, also the deans that have been working, the 21st Century have had opportunities to talk with them, looking at data and planning. So this has been very specific to Evergreen Elementary, so that's where during those sessions, we haven't had other administrative teams from other schools, because they've been looking specifically walking the campuses, walking the campus at Evergreen, for example, and looking at whether the facility is ready for next year, seeing what needs to be worked on maintenance-wise, you know, during this timeframe. So they have a checklist of different things that they're working on, and then action planning. They have action, action steps and timelines that they're directly working on with Evergreen Elementary. So we have not yet, to answer your question, included other schools and administrative teams in that process because it's been very concerted effort working with their team only. But in July 23, that will be a professional development along with facilitating planning. So that's where I've sent out invites to the principals to have their assistant principals, if their content area specialists are able to join as well, inviting them. So that's where the roundtable format at Brewster Hall, I think, will work very well. So that way, they have the professional development, and then they can work collaboratively with their teams at different schools.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. But I'm looking, really, I'm just looking at three, three other schools. And I was hoping that they would have an opportunity to be in there at the beginning. The other three, other 390 or whatever, 290 of our students would come in later because they're not at that critical level. I was thinking that they would come in while, at the, at the initial beginning of it. But if that's not the plan, I'm talking about just the other three, not the rest of them, because I, I know that they will be coming up at some point as well. But we'll know more about that when we get their scores. Okay.
Right, and, and they also will be sharing at the school board meeting, but those, the templates and the action steps and even those checklists of items to be looking at, those are things that I, you know, can share with the other turnaround principals to make sure that they're on target and planning for next school year. So even if they're not physically sitting in, in the conference room, working with Evergreen Elementary's team, those same steps, because I've been at most, many of those sessions where those, where Mr. Pettit or Ms. Crowdey have been in there and have gone through the process with them, and that way it can be replicated with those other schools.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby, very much.
You're welcome.
Dr. Mayer, you have a special recognition you would like to share.
Yes, we're going to have Kevin Christian, our public information officer and coordinator for TV Media Productions, come on up, because Kevin has won quite a few awards he wants to share with you.
I know it's never correct to correct your boss. I appreciate it, Dr. Mayer. We have won several awards, because there's a lot of people behind what I do. And I can't do successfully what I do without the thousands of employees, 43,000 kids and each of you, because we're only as good as what we all do together. So many of you know that I belong to a professional organization here in Florida called Sunspur. That is the Sunshine State School Public Relations Association. We are 71 member strong, and the membership includes people like me and others in similar positions in larger districts. In smaller districts, some of our members are the actual superintendents, because they actually serve as their own PIO, their own press person. So they really, really do it all. So each year, we hold a series of competitions. In the summer, it is for school or district projects and programs and PR programs. And districts are encouraged to submit entries to a very rigorous process, and these awards, these entries are judged by people who are not part of the school PR world. These are people who work in the everyday world. Some of them are credentialed in, in public relations, and some of them are successful in other arenas. So you have a mixture of people looking at all of these projects. This year, there were 28 entries submitted by 12 different districts, I believe. The judges awarded nine first-place medallion awards, and of those nine, Marion County received two. So let me share those with you. The first, and they're quite heavy, actually, like I said, my name may be on this award, but it really belongs to all of us here in Marion County Public Schools. This is a Sunspur Medallion Award for Crisis Communications and School Safety, presented for the Alice Protocol Training Video to Marion County Public Schools dated June 14. And these were handed out in Palm Harbor at the FASSA Summer Conference. So you had, I think, 400 to 500 school administrators there. You had some board members, some superintendents were there. So Marion County received a lot of widespread recognition because of that. This is what that first award looks like. So I don't know, I'm trying to reduce the glare there, but they're, they're all glass, they're very nice, and I'm proud to say they come from right here in Ocala. Why, you might ask? I happen to be president of this organization, but I have nothing to do with the judging. I am completely separate from that part of the process. And I'm happy to say that I've been, actually been the president of Sunspur for the last four years, and it's a great honor to serve. Our second medallion award is for our poster or calendar category, and of course, each of you hopefully regularly references the full-color calendar that we produce each summer. Again, we're happy to do that this summer, and those will be delivered in time for the first day of school. We print 54,000 copies of those. And yes, we're going mobile as well, but people still like that tangible part. So this one is very similar, it's just engraved with the poster calendar category, and again, Marion County Public Schools. Interestingly enough, this year's awards were sponsored by Peachjar. It's ironic, because we are a Peachjar district, and if you're not familiar with Peachjar, think of the flyers that used to go home, the paper flyers that sometimes made it home, but usually ended up buried in the bottom of the backpack or on the floor of the bus. We've all had to pick those up. Peachjar takes those flyers and makes them electronic and sends them directly to the mobile devices of parents and automatically posts them at the bottom of each school's homepage. So that's a great service. We have around 12,000 to 13,000 email addresses in that database right now that receive those, those Peachjar flyers on a regular basis, and that is a free service, so we're happy to do that. So we're happy to win those two awards, but what I'm most proud of is that we also captured Best of Show. Gosh, it sounds like I'm breaking.
Sounds big, yeah.
And this is for, again, the crisis communication, the training video that we produced within two weeks of the Parkland shooting that was shown to all of our 3,000 teachers and additional employees, obviously, but our focus was to get teachers trained immediately. That's a very difficult thing to do, to turn around a 32-minute video in less than two weeks and have it viewed by 3,000 people. But because of the efforts of the people in this district, that happened, and we all know the value of that Alice Protocol training, unfortunately, or fortunately, because of the April 20 incident. So I'm proud of my team members who produced the video, but Dennis McFadden and Tyson Collins and certainly other district folks and the staff at North Marion High School are the stars of that video, and I hope that you have watched it as well. I'm most proud because not only did we win Best of Show this year, not only did we win Best of Show last year, we also won Best of Show two years ago. So for three years in a row, and that's the first time in Sunspur history, one district has captured the Best of Show for each annual medallion award competition. So I share these with you, but I certainly share them with my team members and all of our employees and all of our students.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Christian. We're very proud of you and all the work that your team does. Thank you so much.
You know, I already talked with you. Christian, I am so proud of you, you know.
Kevin has a lot of work, and I can't think of a better person to do it than you. And so congratulations to all of your employees, but job well done, as I've said in the past. Job well done.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
And I thank you, Kevin. We go way back.
Before school board day is.
Before school board days, when the parents would, our different community people with the Republican Party, we would need press, and we would call Gainesville and get Kevin down here, and we did all kinds of things, didn't we? You had us do, we did all kinds of things back in the early 90s. We had a blast in our younger days, before all the gray hair for us both. So, and you were great then, and you were always fair to the parents, and we could always count on you, and you're fair here. You're very professional, and I thank you for all you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian, you're awesome. I am not surprised at all this at all, and you are also very humble, and you always represent Marion County Public Schools with finesse and just, I'm trying to come up with the right word, but I'm not, other than, you're just awesome.
I like finesse.
Finesse, finesse, are you, there's other, but you do, and you just always represent well. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Kevin, very, very much. Dr. Mayer, would you like to introduce Ms. Shayna Horn, Director of Professional Development?
Yes, and Ms. Horn is going to bring a familiar face up to the podium with her, and, well, I'll just let them, them take it. This is very exciting.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Superintendent, it is an honor for us to stand before you today to share with you the Essential Support Personnel Professional Development Plan. Dr. Mayer's vision was to provide a four-level professional development plan for non-instructional employees. The professional development for Essential Support Personnel is the very first of its kind here in Marion County. The training will provide education and review and the necessary skills associated with clerical and secretarial positions within our district. Ms. Paula Bundrick was an essential piece to executing this vision, so she will come up and she will share the different levels with you. Following her will be Mr. Carpenter to share with you the role of MTC in this plan.
Good evening again. I'm very excited about this program. When Dr. Mayer came to me and asked if I could help develop something from her vision, it was a challenge, but one that I was ready to accept, because I really feel that this is something that is necessary for our Essential Support Personnel. So we, we did four levels, and Level One are for those clerical support people out in the schools, either IPC, guidance clerk, receptionist. And what it's designed to do is just to review the basic soft skills that we all need when we're in a school, especially when we're facing the, from the front desk or from the secretary's desk. So it can be anybody from any office that needs the soft skills. The programs that we offer, we, we rolled this out district-wide to non-instructional employees. And the first session that we did was creating a positive work environment. The second session was a five-set, five-week course, Effective School Communication, went into Customer Service and Business Etiquette, Means of Conflict Resolution, and then the final was Managing Pressure and Balance. Mr. Carpenter from Marion Technical College is going to talk about this a little bit more, as they've kind of rolled that out on our behalf. And before I go too much further, I do want to say that this was a team effort from so many people, heads of departments and other people that told us what they needed and how they could help do this training. So we're not going outside of the district to bring trainers in. These are our own people that are already here and have the efficiency and proficiency to be able to train other people and help them review what they need to know. So the second level is designed for that basic overview of all the programs that are used within the Marion County Public Schools. For instance, it could be Microsoft Word or Office and Excel, those types of things. Well, here, I'm going to show you, Microsoft. So these are just examples of some of the programs that we use. Through the Finance Department, they talk about budgets, purchase orders, and all the necessary forms they need. Payroll, which is your time off through Skyward, how to handle TDEs, how to handle jury duty. Level Two could be for our current secretaries, or it could be for someone that's on a staff that handles payroll. They would come to this training, and our own people in the Finance Department would do this training. Level Three is designed to be a little bit more in-depth. So this is perceived to be secretaries that are already in a secretarial role. We'll go into a little bit more about fillable forms or spreadsheets, what Adobe means, what a PDF is, that sort of thing. We'll go through, Mr. Christian, about public relations and public records requests. Our Legal Department will help on legal contracts, what to look for, what you need to have. Level Four, then, is for those secretaries, again, it's going to give them additional training on things that they can use to hope, make them be a little bit more efficient, maybe those shortcuts that they don't know is available out there. They get so busy at their job, they don't have time to really look and investigate. So hopefully, this will give them that training at that level. So they'll look at grant funding. These are just examples of some things. FMLA is forever-changing, so we want to make sure that they change and that they have the most current things to work within their office. So now I'm going to introduce Scott Carpenter, who's the Assistant Principal at Marion Technical College, and he's going to talk about how they did the soft rollout for our Level One.
Kind of hard to follow a legend. I'm going to do the best I can on this one. When Paula came to me back, I believe it was in the winter, she brought the vision from Dr. Mayer and asked if we could help facilitate this program, which it's kind of a natural fit for us, because at the post-secondary level, we already have an office administrative assistant program. And we're very fortunate with the individuals that are on staff that run that program, and their background really fit what the vision was here. So what we did was, we decided that this needed to be a program that was free to Marion County personnel. This was not going to be a program that we would charge for. And we were attempting to meet the needs, not only of the school-based support personnel, but also we have a large contingency of that, that type of personnel. And in developing this career and technical education, we are hearing from the business community greatly, soft skills, soft skills, soft skills. And so it fit, again, and so what we did was, we went to the Florida curriculum, and we pulled out the certain benchmarks that fit these soft skills, and we decided that we would narrow it down, make it a short program, five weeks, two hours each Friday. We didn't want to pull the individuals from their schools and keep them away from their home base very long. We identified the individuals that could teach these classes, and we developed the Creating a Positive Work Environment, The Effective School Communication, Customer Service and Business Etiquette, Means of Conflict Resolution, and Managing Pressure and Balance. As you've seen from Paula through the years that she's been involved in this, her expertise in guiding where we would go with this was very valuable. And like I said, it was a five-week course. We did an eight to 10 on Friday morning, and then we would come back from one to three in the afternoon. We've got on the screen listed there a few of the instructors, but this was a district-wide collaborative effort. We identified individuals within the district that these skill sets fit, that they're really good at. And the feedback that we got from the participants was very interesting, because you never know on the first time you do a course what kind of feedback you're going to get. And I think we made it fun, which was interactive. They had to participate, they couldn't hide nowhere. And then it also gave us the ability to look at scenarios. And Kevin gave us this great idea last year, whenever we did the superintendent's conference, in how to effectively communicate, and he did role-playing. So we tried to incorporate as much role-playing into this as we could. And one of the takeaways that we're coming out of this first rollout is, is that the next sessions that we run, we will videotape those scenarios, so people can actually see what they look like and what they sound like, and they can critique each other. And I think that in itself will be very revealing to an individual, that thinks that they handle the public very well, and when they actually see how they look and how they talk. the public very well and when they actually see how they look and how they talk, I think it would be very, very beneficial to them. It was a fun project for us. We will continue to do this until we get it really effectively done. We won't roll it out to the business community. We want to grow our own. We want to make sure that we take care of our own first and then we will spread our wings and we'll go out to the community.
This next slide will show you some of the comments we got from both participants, principal, and the instructors. I thought it was positive. We're kind of the blind leading the blind in this first session and we wanted to kind of see what we were doing right and some of the things that we could improve on. And as you heard from Mr. Carpenter's, there's some things to improve on. But I like the one about the instructor that, "Thank you for allowing me to put this room into action." They were very dedicated and these were instructors at MTC that do not have students on Friday, but they come into work, they're on duty, but they're doing other things to prepare for the rest of the week and they took time out of that schedule to do these classes for these five weeks. So, I wanted to thank Mr. Carpenter for making that happen and thank them.
Also, I shared with Ms. Paula that we received calls after this cohort went from other departments wanting their secretaries or clerical staff to participate in this as well as other clerical staff and secretaries asking for it. So, we're excited that we will be offering this in the fall and the spring as we will continue the legacy of Ms. Paula Bundrick. MTC will continue to advertise and offer the Level One soft skills and this is designed valuable and relevant training that meets our current needs as we continue to build the capacity from within. Any questions?
Thank you.
You know, when I see that, I often think about how nice that is. But I also know there's another side of this as well. And Paula, I know you can, you can, you probably have heard some of these things over the years. With all these soft skills, I am almost certain those employees want to know how do they get promoted? What is the procedure for them to move from this pay grade to this pay grade? They can get all those soft skills that we're talking about here, but one of the things that has always bugged me over the years, and especially when I talk with the non-instructional staff, is that when we talk about who got this job and why. And I may be being Mr. Killjoy here, but I'm talking about the person that had worked in that job and got these skills and then all of a sudden they get passed over. In this, when we come up with these essential skills, can y'all, can y'all in there some way give somebody some hope if they get all of these skills that they can move up in this system? And that we won't look so far outside to get people that we've already trained for this system. Now, can that be worked into this thing? And I know y'all looking at me like I'm crazy, but I know that this happened.
Mr. James, one of the things that we've been talking, I've been talking with other leaders and departments about this, through our Employment Services Department, you know, when they make an application to apply for a position, they get extra credit for military service and things like that. That's going to be one of the things they add to the application is if they've gone through the Essential Support Personnel Program and at what, to what level, and they can get extra points for that.
Okay. What I'm looking for now, is that going to be in this process somewhere so that all the employees can bring it up here to us and say, "Hey, I had all these things here, military, all of this, and for some reason, I didn't get the job." See, this is what, see, I'm leaving just like you, Paula, and I'm just telling you that I know that there's employees that have been sitting around here for a long time, then all of a sudden they didn't get a job and they can't explain it why. And maybe this is some of the stuff that they may have needed, but haven't been told and they may have it, but they still didn't get the job. I would like to have something there, but a good job, what you got. I just want to see more there.
You know, maybe there's a way to have some type of certificate when they've completed a certain number of these things that...
Absolutely, and they did receive a certificate and will continue to provide a certificate because the vision is, and I agree with you, so when I come to a training and I leave, I can add that to my resume and say, "I have Microsoft Excel, I have these certain skills." So, as we're looking at secretaries or other clerical positions, we're looking for these skills and they'll have them. So, it will open up the door for them.
Right, a certificate that they've completed that section. And that way, it'll just be on file.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think you guys did a great job and I can see the benefits on how that it's going to cause those promotions, so, great job.
Thank you so much. And Paula, thanks for stepping in and helping with this. You are the expert. You know from the rookie to where you are today, what's needed and anytime you can better yourself with training. You know, we all should learn something new every day and we should be lifelong learners. And this just, this helps our non-instructional personnel be those lifelong learners. So, thank you so much for your commitment.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just like this, that going to be your...
I will now ask the School Board's Attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the School Board Secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any requests?
We have two. Vicky Treulieb. Thank you.
My name is Vicky Treulieb, T-R-E-U-L-I-E-B. I reside at 4,700 Southeast 33rd Avenue, Ocala, Florida, 34480. I come here today because there has been a lot of bickering that's been going back and forth among the Board and I think it's a poor representation of our school system as a whole and it really needs to stop because it's also poorly reflecting on the county and on students who want to go to school here and their parents making that decision for them. And we can call it bullying, we can call it whatever we want to call it. There's a thing called tact and Ms. Stacy, you and I are...
No, no personal attacks.
I wasn't going to attack her. We're friends and we have been and I respect you for a lot of the things that you say.
But Vicky, there hasn't been any bickering on the Board for six weeks, so I have, we don't want to...
No, because you went online and you've done it, but I'm not here to attack you. I just want you to realize how it's reflecting poorly on our community and as a, as a group...
I've needed a 30-year-old to tell me how I need to behave, so...
This is my time to speak.
Well, I don't have to sit here and listen to you.
Ms. Stacy.
It's your job.
No, it's not.
Well, you... You also didn't show up at the Forest High School graduation, which has been brought back up because you were afraid of one of the staff members.
I can't let you talk about, Ms. Stacy. You can address the Board as a whole.
What I want you guys to do is I want you to come together and work together. When we attack one another and we go against everything, then we can't make things work together as a whole. You're allowed to have disagreements, obviously, and that's good. It strengthens things to have adversaries and, you know, to bring up the opposite points. I encourage that in my students every day. But when we jump to extremes of making attacks, bringing about things that are irrelevant and name-calling, even my six-year-old knows better than to do that. So, I just want to leave you with the words of Thumper from Bambi, "And if you can't say something nice, then don't say anything at all." Thank you.
We've had a very nice time here for the last six weeks. I'm not real sure what you're talking about.
Ms. Lopez.
John Crawford.
Here he goes. There's your problem.
Ms. Stacy.
John Crawford, C.R.A.W., F.O.R.D., 3999 Southwest 51st Court, District One. Two months ago, I spoke to the Board and you approved allowing Forest High School to accept donations over $1,000. I want to give you an update. First of all, thank you, all five of you. Thank you very much for voting to allow that. These were the shirts that were purchased. They were student-created. Here's the back. And those were presented to all students, all staff, faculty, bus drivers, lunchroom that were there that day and students after who happened to miss the day. But I need to especially thank Choice Awards and Apparel in Bellevue for donating $2,500 towards the Forest Strong account and for also creating shirts the community could purchase to support. Advantage Specialties, Jane Crawl from there, she produced these at cost. We purchased almost 2,000 shirts, so she took an implicit cost donation in kind there. And so, I want to thank those two groups. The SGA, the Student Government Association, did have to contribute some money as the full cost wasn't covered. So, if there's anyone out there that would still like to help our students pay for these, you can still donate to the Forest Strong account. On the check you just put Forest High School, hashtag Forest Strong in the memo and we'd love to accept these. We're also looking into legally producing these maybe at a different cost in the fall, but that's nothing to discuss here.
How much is a shirt?
The shirts, she gave us to us at cost and as far as her corporation, I don't want to contribute what we receive them for. Any Board member who would like one, simply email me your shirt size and I can absolutely get you one. As well as these wristbands were also produced with the date and hashtag Forest Strong. These are both student-generated entities. I also have a second thing I'd like to discuss. Dwight Eisenhower said, "The supreme quality of leadership is unquestionably integrity. Without it, no real success is possible, no matter whether it's on a section gang, a football field, in an army, or in an office. Integrity can be defined as the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles." Throughout society, it seems this quality of integrity in government leaders is atrophying to the point where there are now multiple subjective truths that cannot simultaneously coexist. When a member of the Board says something in a Board meeting, to the press, on social media, invariably the thought, positive or negative, will be associated with the Board as a whole. And when the Board sits in silence allowing mistruths to propagate throughout the community, it becomes de facto endorsement of the policy. I am not here to open old wounds. I'm not here to create new wounds. I'm not here to prosecute any individual. I am here to ask our elected officials are held to a high standard of decorum that we would expect them to be. Last time I spoke, I spoke with passion and perhaps I was too passionate. Today, I speak with a calm and concise clarity that is needed for effective communication. I am urging you, the members of the School Board, to establish a standard by which you feel members should communicate to their constituents and then hold each other accountable. A vote of censure has no legal repercussions associated with it. However, it sends a clear message to the residents of Marion County and the 43,000 students you have taken an oath to serve, that petty name-calling, false information, and intimidation by members will not be tolerated. As a Christian, I believe in forgiveness, especially the concept of grace. I hope that from this point forward, we can all work together for the betterment of Marion County Public Schools. Educating our children is the most important task of society and we must do better. Our future depends on it. Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items, C9.1-C21.2, with the exception of the job descriptions for school security officer and senior school security officer under item C14.1 and item C21.1. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James and seconded by Ms. Boynton. If there is no discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the 2017-2018 Annual Equity Update Report? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. Dr. Mayor, you have a presentation on this item?
Yes, Jody Phillips, who's our Athletic Program Specialist for the district, and Ms. Rose Cohen, the Director of Equity and Assurance, has some exciting news for you this evening. Come on up, please.
Good evening. Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Mayor, Attorney Gibbs, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez, thank you so much for this opportunity. We do have some exciting news. In the midst of all the mandates that DOE requires to present, we have an annual equity plan that we present. And as you well know, that's driven by Florida Statute 1,000.05. Another name for it is the Florida Educational Equity Act. A major part of the annual equity plan is to report on Title IX. Title IX, as you well know, prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex. As far as our reporting, in this case, we're going to be addressing gender equity in the area of athletics. This year is very, very special to us here in Marion County. I've been doing this for a very long time and I consider this year as a very celebratory year because for the first time in a long time, we have become compliant. So, that's exciting news. And Jody Phillips, the district's Program Specialist for the athletics area, is here to tell you all about it.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, Ms. Lopez, Mr. Gibbs, again, I appreciate the opportunity to share with you. I know we certainly focus on education, but athletics and especially in this case, becomes part of the whole child and part of their education. So, let me... Our school ADs, just to cover a few of the bases of kind of why we're here tonight and about the compliance and Title IX issues, our school ADs collect and analyze their participation data seasonally for the fall, winter, and the spring sports seasons while consistently having to judge whether or not they're accommodating all of the student interests that go along with those. And through the use of the three prongs, Title IX compliance is determined through not only just proportion, but it's also through expansion and interest accommodations that our programs offer. And through this year, it's been determined that we were compliant through program expansion and our interest accommodation. Some examples of these expansions and serving what is considered to be the underserved population, I've listed a few of them here for you guys to see and they're there on the handout, which would include female lacrosse, the beach volleyball, and some other additions to our bowling teams and slow pitch softball. Certainly, this is a big team effort, allowing us to expand beach volleyball this year and the lacrosse programs were a big part of this and us being able to attain this for the district, but it doesn't go without saying that we not only... for the district, but it doesn't go without saying that we not only thank folks in this room, but it takes coaches, school administrators, athletic directors to carry all of this out and make sure that these actual activities happen for the students. So, to all of you, I personally thank you. Future, and what the future holds for us in Marion County Public Schools, we will continue to monitor student interests and abilities as the landscape of the world of athletics constantly, and competitive athletics constantly changes, and as we see what's going to best serve the students that we have in front of us, we will continue to provide that data to not only you folks here, but also the communities, and to determine, you know, what would best serve the interest and abilities of our students here in Marion County.
Let me just add, one of the reasons why we are so excited is because we have seven high schools. We have a number of sports, junior varsity, as well as varsity, and if one school is out of compliance, that means the entire school district is out of compliance. So sometimes we may have five in, two out, and of course, the entire school district. So it's very, very, I guess, disconcerting when you submit your report and DOE has to see that the school district is out of compliance. So to finally have our athletic department to go out into schools, to encourage middle schoolers to become more and more interested in our sports, and to do surveys to find out the area of interest for female as well as male students, is a very tedious task, and our group have worked so, so very hard, so long. We've tried a number of things to ensure we had gender equity, and all failed. Several years ago, we thought that because we had more male students participating in sports than we had female, we thought that perhaps if we had competitive cheer, which typically offered more female students, we would get to the point of being in compliance. That didn't work because they rejected that and said, "No, it's competitive cheer, but it's not a sport." OCRA, the Office of Civil Rights, said, "Yes, it is," I think it was FHCC, or one of the others, I may have it reversed, but the two agencies weren't seeing eye to eye, so we had to back off of that. So thanks to Mr. Phillips and his staff for just working diligently to ensure the district did come to the point of bringing the district into compliance, so that's why we're celebrating.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
Jody, you know, I am a big-time sports mom. You remember the days?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's nothing that's the, it is the best, there's two great dropout prevention problems, ROTC and sports, and they don't get any better than those two. And a lot of times, the families want to go, I've sent emails around, I've kind of halfway talked to like your secretary or somebody about it, but I want to ask you, while the cameras are rolling, to help me with something that parents have talked to me about, where their student, there's like the family plan, like, there's a family that talked to me, and they've got like eight children, and their brother played baseball, and all eight children had to pay a fee at the gate to get in to see the game. And I would like it if we could figure out a way to have a family plan of some kind where we have maximum of like two children pay or something in a family. Because for the large family, they want to go see brother play, but then they can't afford to go see brother play, and they have to watch from the outside of the gate, you know, of the fence or whatever. So while the cameras are rolling, and God and everybody's hearing me, would you please work on that for me? Thank you.
Yeah.
Jody, congratulations on being in compliance. Now let's get down to the real stuff.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us an update on the Vanguard High School basketball job, how it's moving along, and things like that? Let me just say, for the people that don't know, the Kingdom of the Sun is probably one of the most well-known basketball tournaments in the country, to be honest with you. And when I look at, if you go down there and you look up on the wall, down at the state basketball tournament, you'll see Jim Haley and the Kingdom of the Sun. And why is this so important to me? Because I said it's important to this community. If you go to the University of Florida, everybody over there will know about the Kingdom of the Sun. And why I'm asking this, because you've got a new principal over there, and I'm sure he understands the importance of it. I think this board will understand the importance of it. Just give us an update on it. Do you have anything?
We are actually, we'll be meeting tomorrow morning. I wouldn't be prepared today to give you much more than to say it is in process, and they are reviewing the applicants and the resumes that have been submitted, and I can tell you that I do believe that we have quite a number of qualified applicants that will do an outstanding job, that I can tell you. If we were meeting tomorrow evening, I'd have a better answer for you, and I apologize for that.
Board, why is that important to you? Y'all got to know good stuff when you hear it. Okay, so that's my thing, is that if you are from this area, and if you've been here for a period of time, you know what the Kingdom of the Sun mean to us, and I'm old forest and not...
And I want you to know that Mr. Carlisle is very aware, and he is a local product, and he was himself a basketball player at one of our schools, and so he is taking that position to heart, I assure you.
Maybe he's watching tonight.
He may be.
Thank you.
Board, we have a motion and a second on the floor to accept the two thousand seventeen, eighteen annual equity update report. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve school security option as agreed upon at the June twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen administrative briefing and work session? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Ms. King. I would like to start the discussion on this. First of all, for those of you, this has been a tedious process for us ever since the legislation was passed. It has been fast and furious to determine how we are going to put officers at our schools. And there are some people that I want to thank, but I do want to let you know that we have, let me get my phone up here, fifty-six SROs, the recommendation is fifty-six SROs, which includes, which are our school resource officers, and that includes two at five of our largest high schools. We will also be adding up to thirty guardians, which will be, in addition to, it will supplement for our SROs, and our guardians will be people that are, hopefully, have had previous law enforcement, we have a lot of them in our schools and military, so we're looking into all of that, especially at our middle and high schools. I want to thank Dennis McFadden, who has worked diligently on this, I want to thank Teresa Boston Ellis, who has worked diligently on this, also Sheriff Woods in the county commission, Chief Greg Graham in the city council, for working with us, for coming to a cost that we can work with, we will still be over by about a million three from the Safe Schools money, but we do feel that we can work with it, and we do feel this is a way to keep our children safe. Also want to thank Chief Holland of the Bellevue Police, who was at every discussion, and Chief McQuade of Dunellen Police. Everybody worked great together, the one thing that all of us do together well is collaborate. Through that collaboration and negotiations, we have been able to come up with this agreement. We will be voting on the actual contracts in July. But I want to thank all of those, Dr. Meyer and her administration, board members for your diligence in this, because we had to move very fast and furious, we needed to be sure that we were doing what we felt, what everybody felt, was the best things for our children. So we will be starting school in August with a uniformed armed SRO at every one of our schools. We are thrilled for this, we are sad that we are at a time in our world where we have to think about this, but we are fortunate that our community works so closely together to get this done. So, board, is there any other discussion? If no more discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye. Any opposed, like sign. The motion passed five zero. Thank you, board. May I have a motion to approve distribution of Safe Schools allocation for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school years as follows. Upon approval of the existing two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year budget, the board provided a portion of the Safe Schools allocation to our charter schools on a pro-rata basis. The district's total Safe Schools allocation for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year was what, eight hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, which eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars was provided to our charter schools based upon their per-student allocation. May I have a motion? Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Ms. Boynton. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all those in favor, please vote aye. And opposed, like sign. Motion passed five zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the following, this is the best part of the meeting, may I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-one cents. Twenty-five hundred to Bellevue Middle School from their business partner, Dr. Jones Orthodontics, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Dunellen Elementary School from their business partner, Forsight Construction Group, via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Twenty-five hundred to Dunellen High School from their business partner, Collier-Jernigan and Goddard, PA, via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Dunellen Middle School from Howard Glitt. Twenty-four hundred dollars to Dunellen Middle School from Joseph Renda. Two hundred thousand dollars to Family School and Community Engagement from Monroe Regional Health System. Four thousand dollars to Fort King Middle School from the Marion County Hospital District. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Marion County Student Media Festival from Cox Communication. Five thousand dollars to Marion County Student Media Festival from the Public Education Foundation. Eighty-five hundred dollars to Marion Technical College from Summer Glen Veterans Club. Backpacks and portable wireless Bluetooth PA loudspeaker valued at one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-one cents to North Marion High School from DonorsChoose.org. One thousand dollars to the Superintendent's Literacy Fund from the Stanley and Martha Hanson Trust. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Two Thirty Circle K Stores, Inc. Five thousand twenty dollars to Vanguard High School from Ford Exposure Marketing and Promotion, Inc. Three thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Marion County Hospital District. One thousand dollars to Vanguard High School from Best of Show, Marion County Student Media Festival, and ten thousand dollars to Westport High School from Mark and Tina Cassie. May I have a motion?
Second.
Ms. King, moved by Ms. King and seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor of accepting these donations, please vote aye. And opposed, like sign.
Do you?
Motion passed five zero. Thank you. Mr. James, you're pretty full of smiles tonight, I'm going to let you thank everybody.
Wait a minute now. It's always a pleasure to sit and listen at a number of people that's contributing to the school system, and on behalf of all the students and teachers that will be impacted by these dollars and cents, we thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, July nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at nine o'clock a.m. The purpose of this work session is to review five-year work plan draft, additional alternative programs, young parent program future plan, review code of student conduct, address homework, and MCPS Student Services and Mental Health Strategic Plan. And please remember that that is, I believe, the board meeting, the work session where we have extended it.
What's the date on it again?
I believe it's July nineteenth.
Okay.
Ms. King, we will start with you with board concerns.
Yes. I just, I'm, last week, I went to a twelve-county initiative, and it was a Marion County roundtable, and our House Representatives, Stone and McLean were there, Senator Baxley had representation, CEP was there, Angie was there, our county commissioner, and there were several people representing, our county was there. I learned a lot. Also, somebody that I met there was Jessica from the College of Central Florida, and she works in the governmental relations department with the president, and she had a great suggestion, and she suggested, or she wondered if as a board, and Dr. Mayor, if we would be interested in having an educational summit, and where it would include like our pre-K, K through twelve, our colleges and stuff like that, just, you know, have a summit, we can talk about things that are going on, and, you know, it was just, after witnessing what I did last week and see how the partnerships and the communication, I think it would greatly enhance us as a district, and I would highly encourage that, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, so. Are we interested in that? And we can...
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you, and that's all I have for tonight.
Ms. Stacy?
Yes, it's been an interesting week for me, if you've just, it's been kind of interesting. An organization has a petition, that same organization has a petition for Let's Save the Bananas, they have a petition for Save America from Aliens, and so, anyway, it's been an interesting week, as my friends and I have kind of laughed through all of that. But the last board meeting, teachers had requested at the last board meeting that I... that I do a presentation, you know, talking about the district's culture of social promotion. And, and Dr. Meyer's closing remarks, she commented that we don't have social promotion anymore. And so, she disagreed with me. And, you know, and it might not be called social promotion, it might be another word for it, that I don't know. Because social promotion kinda says they're held back. I looked up the definition, it says they're held back for, that they're not ready to go, to build their self-esteem. I don't believe really that that's the reason, you know, we aren't holding children back. So, maybe Dr. Meyer and I are kinda both right, where it's not really social promotion, but it's something. I don't understand where it's coming from. So, I would like to talk about, so we won't argue about the lingo. Or what we call it when the child is promoted to the next level who isn't yet at the old grade level. But all I can do is give you the facts and let you be the judge. And we can put whatever name on it we wanna call it. What I do know is that our teachers tell me they are totally fed up with being expected to raise students in second grade who are two grades below grade level. Per the Florida Department of Education, only two districts out of sixty-seven in the state of Florida retain a lower percentage of students, with one being Manatee, interestingly, and the other being Jefferson, and Jefferson County is ranked sixty-fourth in the state. And as we know, we have dropped to fifty-ninth in the state. So, tonight, I would like to destroy a myth. It's a myth that for twenty years, through multiple superintendents, that I've heard. I don't really believe I've heard Dr. Meyer say this, but the superintendents before her did, but I've heard maybe some of her staff members, but I don't really, can't really say I've ever heard her say this. But her staff members have heard him say it. That, and the newspaper has been an accomplice to this for twenty years. That low socio, socioeconomic students just can't learn. And that they pull our FSA scores down. I've always been so troubled by that. It seems like such a racist statement. And I've always rejected that, coming from a town where, where actually the white people were in the minority. And I had a lot of minority friends who were extremely smarter than me. I always had a problem understanding why poor people were the ones hurting our scores so much. So, I don't wanna hear those hurtful words anymore. So, I would like to destroy that fake excuse for failure once and for all, right here and now tonight. The facts show me that we simply, here in Marion County for many, many years, probably long before this administration came on board, long before that, we haven't really given our poorest and our minority children an equal opportunity in education in this county in certain ways that I won't go into right now. But due to this time restraints, I will share with you that of the top twenty ranked districts out of sixty-seven, six out of the top twenty districts have a higher percentage of impoverished children percentages, a higher numbers of socioeconomic families than we have here in Marion County. Of the top twenty, I repeat, top twenty in the state of Florida out of sixty-seven districts, six have a higher socioeconomic issue than we have. Those numbers are not that I received from the state off, the state, straight off the Department of Education website. It's not related to parents aren't filling out the free and reduce form or anything like that. Because these numbers are coming from Medicaid numbers and SNAP and driven by the Health Department and other agencies. Because many, many schools in the state now have free and reduced, free lunches for elementary children. So, the forms really aren't getting filled out like they used to. So, we're having to get our numbers from another source. And the Department of Education has a huge formula that this is laid out in. Now, this is really the most interesting finding that I have come across. Three of the five top performing districts in Florida have almost one hundred percent poverty. Three of the five top districts, academic performing districts, have more poverty than we have. They are number three ranked Gilchrist at ninety-nine point nine percent socioeconomic status. Number four ranked Lafayette at ninety-nine point nine percent. And number five ranked Union County at ninety-eight point five percent impoverished. Marion County is at eighty-five percent. And we are ranked at fifty-ninth in the state. And these three districts are ranked, three, four, and five, in the state of Florida with almost one hundred percent free and reduced, I guess, and impoverished stu, students. So, now let's look at retention in all five top performing districts. Three of them impoverished and two are not. Yet, even in the higher socioeconomic districts with very high student test scores, like number two ranked St. John's County, with only a twenty-three percent poverty in their student base, they still retain four point four-two percent of their kindergarten students, which is sixty-three times the percentage we held back last year. Not last year, but the previous year, because we don't have a full year. I'll talk about the new numbers in a minute. But this is for seventeen, two thousand and seventeen. Which is sixty-three times the percentage we held back in the spring of two thousand and seventeen. And in first grade in St. John's, they hold back three point twenty-eight percent, which is fifty-four times the percentage we hold back. And at second grade, they hold back one point seventy-two percent of their students, second graders, which is nineteen times more the percentage than we hold back. Let's look at the district of Gilchrist, ranked at third in the state of Florida, with ninety-nine point nine percent low socioeconomic population. They retain ten point nine oh percent of their kindergarten students, which is one hundred and fifty-five times more higher percentage than Marion County retains. And they retain fourteen point eighty-five percent of their first graders, which is two hundred and forty-seven times higher percentage of Marion County retained. And they retain six point five percent of second graders, which is seventy-two times the percentage of Marion County retained. Now, let's look at Lafayette, with ninety-nine point nine percent poverty status. They held back fourteen point eighty-one percent of their kindergarten students, which is two hundred and eleven times higher percentage than us. They held back six point eight-two percent first graders, which is a hundred and thirteen times higher percentage than Marion held back. And in second grade Lafayette held back six point two-five percent, which is sixty-nine times the percentage of Marion County. Number five ranked Union County, with ninety-eight point five percent low socioeconomic status, per the Department of Education's own website. Held back in kindergarten seventeen point fifty-nine percent of their kindergarteners, which is two hundred and fifty-one times the percentage Marion County held back. And remember, we're ranked fifty-ninth and they're ranked third. They're ranked, I guess they're ranked fifth. And they're holding back two hundred and fifty-one times the percentage of students we're holding back. In first grade, they held back seven point two percent, which is one hundred and twenty-one times the percentage of first graders we held back. And in second grade, they held back four point eighty-two percent, which is fifty-three times the percentage we're holding back. The new numbers for this year, I requested those. And Ms. Girlak was so kind to promptly give them to me. She responded as quick as you can say, you can flick your bitch. I had them back on my computer from her. And we have now, we still are under a percent. We've gone up a little bit, we have under a percent. So, what I found this year was that is, we held back, we held back only eight kindergarteners out of two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. And in first grade, we retained sixteen out of three thousand one hundred and three students. And in second grade, that stayed the same as last year, at point oh nine percent, I think it was. I don't remember, whatever it was on my paperwork. So, still this change represents only half of a percent, which is still many, many times. It still keeps us in the very lowest bottom in the state of districts, district retainage. Probably still less than ninety percent of the rest of the districts are holding back. What I don't understand is why we don't retain children who are not prepared to enter the next grade level when the state doesn't penalize us financially for retention. And so, maybe that's something that we can talk about in a workshop or, or something where we can kinda go through this. Because this is a culture that was here before Dr. Meyer was here. This is a long time culture, because I've gone back quite a few years and looked at this. It's a, it's, it's a long time culture here, which could explain so many things. And so, for Dr. Grantham, I have a question, wherever he's at, I don't know where he's at. We have three indicators that our students aren't being adequately prepared. The teachers tell me this and tell us that. The FSA, when they get to third grade, show that less than half are proficient. So, I will need someone to help me understand whether this is a policy that we have, that only eight of our nearly three thousand kindergarteners are all that we hold back. You know, sixteen of our thirty-one, three thousand one hundred and three first graders are on grade le, that's, I mean, everybody's on grade level except sixteen out of thirty-one hundred. And that only three of the thirty-two hundred second grade students, there's only three in the entire district that aren't ready to get to third grade. Teachers tell me that's just not so. This year's Golden Apple Teacher of the Year pleaded with us about excess district testing. And a kindergarten teacher once brought in a wagon full of tests. And that was in the last administration, but the kindergarten teachers say they can still fill that wagon with tests. So, what are we doing with our data that these tests reveal? The teachers, you know, I don't want anybody to say that the teachers don't wanna hold them back. The teachers tell me completely different and it's not really that's, that's the other districts. Their teachers hold students back and it's, you know, or is it that it's our district written or unwritten administrative policy to move students to the next grade? I don't know where this is coming from. But I would like to discuss this deeply at a, at a workshop and see if we can maybe do some of these comparisons. Because I looked at all of the surrounding districts, Alachua, Citrus, Volusia, Lake, all ranked much higher than we are. And they have large retainage in kindergarten, first and second grade, large numbers. You know, like, when I'm looking at these numbers and I say it's like two hundred times, that's like two thousand percent more than us. I mean, it's huge. So, I just wanted to share this information, because it took me a long time to put it together. And I do see a definite, definite correlation between what's happening with our number one districts and what's happening, you know, in our situation. That maybe we just do, maybe we do, maybe one big piece to our problem here is we just don't have hardly anyone retained in the early grades. And, and I thank y'all for patiently listening to my study that I prepared. And I will share it with anyone that wants to see it. Thank you.
Mr. James?
I just think we need to put that to a workshop and let us really go through it. Thing that I just wanna say in reference to where we are. And I'll, I'll ask our school board attorney, attorney to look at this. I know in the past, we had people to speak before the Board. And we had a clause in there, we had something in there that said that they ought to speak if we are, if it's about something that we ought to vote on, or we are impending to vote on. And I think we have to go back and hold people to that. And when I say that, I don't like to see people throw bricks and then run out of the room. Because when I say that, I'm looking at, looking at how we are utilizing our, our media. I've heard things tonight where it was close to this, because people were being attacked and things like that. And this was nothing we were gonna vote on and nothing we really had anything to do with it. They were using it as a sounding board to throw rocks. My big thing is if they are to do that, then they need to address us individually, or they need to send us an email, or they need to send us a, a letter. But it, it really taint sometime the school board meeting when we hear these things. And it's nothing that we're gonna vote on, it's nothing that pending a vote. And I think we need to really look at what we're doing here, in terms of allowing people just to come and throw a few rocks because they wanna get on TV. How many times tonight did we hear people say about this television up here? And if they really wanted to talk with somebody or impact somebody, to me, that should not be part of their speeches, they need to come directly to us. And I think it's, at some point, we need to address that. Do any of y'all remember when, when we had that on there?
Here it is.
Okay, do we have it on there? Okay, then we need to adhere, to call it out. And if they want, if they want to speak about an individual or anything else, then they, they need to be shut down. And I just think that would, would really add to sensibility to what we're doing. And this is what my thought is for tonight. And I know we have people out there that's watching these things. And if they have some concerns, they need to get them to us. Because there's more than one way to get your message out. And that's, that's where I am. Thank you.
Ms. Boynton?
Well, you know, FSB, we had such a, we were training. And there were so sessions that we had. But the best one I had, and I'm sure you had it too, Kelly, there was this, there was a movie. And the movie is called Missing, just missing, listen to it. And I, I would like for a superintendent to, to look at for it. So, you can look at it, it will change your life. It changed me instantly, you know, after, I was crying, I don't know if you were crying, but it was, it was something for, that, that we need for our county, you know? I think, and, and you only had, knit for one. And, and I went in and it was, and I, at first, you know, I didn't thought it was gonna, you know, what it was gonna be. And they only thought it was gonna be about like twenty people. It was filled, you know? And I was like, wow. There were so sessions that they had for us to train for. Of course, always the legislation that, what they have. And I gave you Mr. James's information, so he, as I was just thick. But I made sure that we have all that information.
Thank you. And Ms. Boynton, I actually took that information and gave it to Juan Lopez and to Dr. Grantham to possibly do some, some training. And left that with Mr. Lopez as well. So, it was about teaching children, teaching all of us to listen and to watch for signs. But thank you, that's a great idea. I am very pleased to say that I and the superintendent and Ms. Boynton attended the Public Education Foundation of Marion County's annual meeting this morning to celebrate the year that they've had. They have graduated, take stock in children. They have, they have provided hundreds of thousand dollars in grants, in school supplies. They thank their board members. And they're raising about one point eight million dollars a year through our Public Education Foundation. I'm so proud to be a part of them. They were recognized as, in the nation, as the top twenty second foundation in the nation, number twenty-two in the nation. They're doing marvelous things over there. And it was an excellent, excellent morning. I also would like to share that the Star Banner, the CEP of Ocala, and the Marion Culture Alliance have all endorsed the upcoming referendum, which is so important to our students. And we're speaking at clubs and organizations. Anybody that's listening, we're very willing to come and speak. This referendum is incredibly important to our students. And we're hoping that you will think so too and get out and vote on August twenty-eighth. But I wanna thank the CEP, the Star Banner, and the Marion Culture Alliance for actually endorsing this referendum. That will help us a, a lot to get the word out to people. So, thank you very much. Dr. Meyer?
Thank you. Officer Dees, thanks for being here tonight. And you're one of our awesome SROs, so we appreciate you on multiple levels. And it was good to see you tonight. You shared your arms very tired from lifting kids in, in the water today. And they were all swimming and, but yet you come and take care of us tonight. So, thank you for that. And we know Officer Christman is in the lobby taking care of things outside, so we appreciate him as well. And when we think about our SROs and, and the lengthy process that we all went through to ensure school safety, we have a lot of people to thank. And one also to thank is Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Gibbs, thank you for the detail that you put in. No, that's okay, to the, to the contracts and to responding to, to not only the Board, but to my side of the House and, and just getting details and making connections. It helped so much. So, thank you very much, you're appreciated. We have a lot to celebrate in our district and, and we mentioned some things tonight, well, a lot of things. And we also want- And we also want to mention that this week is the Model Schools Conference in Orlando. And again, that our vocational programs under the guidance of Mr. Vianello are being recognized at this conference. It is a national conference, and we are one of just ten, ten school districts nationwide that have been named an innovative school district. And that is because of the vocational programs. And what speaks so, so highly about these programs is who joined Mr. Vianello at the conference. We had members of his Vocational Advisory Board there. We had Kevin Shealy, who is the director of the Chamber of the CEP. Rondo Fernandez was there with them, and Kathleen Woodring from WorkSource. So he brought all those folks down, and they were as excited as he was to present. And they, they had a full house in both sessions. So just so proud of those partnerships and, and our efforts to reach all kids in that middle majority and to make sure that every child, every child has an opportunity. And great things are happening. Coming up, of course, is Fourth of July. So we hope everybody stays safe and enjoys the holiday next week with family, and that's so important. So again, the next board meeting won't be till July fourth. So everybody have an awesome holiday and some great family time. And tonight, we also, as we say goodbye to Paula, we wanna thank Dr. Hamm. He's in the back corner. And thank you, sir, for your dedication to our kids and coming back and stepping up. And I, we can mark this down, Elena, that, speechless. Just, just can't put into words what you've, you've done to the district. So thank you. Thank you so much. And I was sitting today at the computer and Mr. Rogers popped into my head. And there's an awesome documentary that I highly recommend that is out right now. And it's in selected cities, gonna go nationwide soon. But about Mr. Rogers and the impact that he had on not only kids, but on society and just his gentle, his gentleness. And as I'm sitting there and it popped into my head and I was reflecting on it, I remembered that I had a book of his quotes. And I'd shared a quote, I think, about a year ago from him. And it's, it's like Mr. Rogers speaks to you. But this quote, I would just like to end with this quote from him, where he said, "When I was very young, most of my childhood heroes wore capes, flew through the air, or picked up buildings with one arm. They were spectacular and got a lot of attention. But as I grew, my heroes changed, so that now I can honestly say that anyone who does anything to help a child is a hero to me." And I would just like to add an addendum. And that Paula Bundrick is a hero to me. Thank you.
Mr. Gibbs?
Good evening. I won't keep you long, but I did get a bit of legal business that I need the board to address. We've got served with a request for class inclusion in a case involving the city of Ocala. They're being sued by Discount Sleep of Ocala LLC, doing business as Mattress Warehouse, among others. But I'm recommending that you exclude yourselves from this class. We have ongoing litigation with the city of Ocala regarding fire fees. All right, that litigation should determine our case. I don't believe we will be suitably situated to allow other plaintiffs to carry out our defense of those issues as we are a government entity rather than just a public-private business, so.
Consensus to exclude? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before moving forward with student disciplinary matters, Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, ma'am.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD eighteen dash one oh one E, JD eighteen dash one oh two, JD eighteen dash one oh three E, and JD eighteen dash one oh four E with educational services through the remainder of two thousand seventeen eighteen school year and the entire two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year? Moved by Ms. King.
Becca.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
These get harder and harder every week for me.
Motion passed five zero. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 I accidentally exited out. Gotcha. Thank you.
Motion passed five zero. Meeting adjourned at seven twenty-seven.